Okay.
Time you're a voting member tonight.
Okay, sounds good.
I don't know where everybody else is. Have we heard from anybody that we're gonna have a that they weren't gonna be here CJ?
Uh, just Deb Trumbull will not be attending this evening.
Okay, let me see if I can find the agenda. Of course, now my tablet says it's unable to load it. Oh, that was the one that I had to go to the other email for, right?
Yeah, I think the first one was correct or something, right Heather?
And my tablet won't give me anything back far enough to give me that email. So I'm gonna be flying a little bit. Pardon?
That first email was just not meant to be. We just had nothing but problems.
There, I can get the agenda this way. So we have minutes to approve. Does anybody have any review of the minutes or any corrections to make?
December 21st was kind of interesting. Lines 41 through 64 were from the town board, it looks like. So those need to be removed. And I noticed in the Britton Woods subdivision on page six, line 202 and 203. The final plat approval is conditioned upon new road names recommended by the planning board and approved by the town board. I don't recall us recommending any names for the road. I'm assuming that the applicant maybe had a road name. Like Britton Woods Drive or something.
We could come up with a get name or two, couldn't we Dean?
Woods Drive sounds good to me, but.
Sounds great to me.
Hey, we can suggest.
I don't recall anything.
No, I recall.
Road name.
You're correct Dean, we didn't, we didn't talk about road names.
No.
No. That I recall.
No, we didn't.
Well, something probably sounded like road name on the tape.
Guess I could go to the submittals and see if there was anything on the plat.
I don't believe so.
I mean, we haven't recommended a road name since I've been on the board, have we? Larry, do you do any?
Larry, have you named some roads? I think he's froze.
Yeah, there's, there's nothing on the preliminary plat. So I, I don't know if that's important or not. It's just I saw it in there and thought that says it's something that we put out as a condition, but we haven't acted upon it.
Doug, does the town board do anything with the roads?
Nope.
No?
All we did was put forth Louise Bomett Drive, I think, the last time I remember.
Uh, yeah, so the town board will accept the road for dedication. And at that point, certainly the road could be named and the planning board, if it chooses, can make a recommendation.
Okay, I see Dale's here. Dale, I think that with the lack of members, board members that we have tonight, you can both be voting members tonight.
Okay.
It probably was your turn anyway.
So Jerry, what do you think? Should we just take off recommended by the planning board?
Yes.
And just have approved by the town board?
Yep, I keep, or does, so if the town board approves it, then we'll just amend the minutes.
Okay, those were, I think, the only two things that I had.
That was for December 21st.
Yes.
And I wasn't there because that was the day after my wife broke her shoulder.
Yeah. Usually the developer will present with a name and the town will either approve it or deny it.
Right. Heather, do you see that stuff? Line 41 through 64. Looks like it's all from the town board meeting.
Yeah, so that was Doug's liaison report.
Oh, okay.
That's why I included that.
Okay, good, all right. And that's all I had.
In that case, it ought to stay in there if it's part of Doug's report.
We can't hear you Heather.
Are you confused enough now Heather?
No, I think the, the heading is just on the previous page. That's why.
Yeah, you're correct. Sorry.
Any other comments? Corrections? Can I hear a motion to approve the minutes as written?
I made a motion. As amended.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Raise your hand. Aye. All opposed? Abstained? Okay, now we've got the minutes from the last meeting. Which was sometime January 7th, maybe? No?
11?
11.
Yeah.
So do we have any corrections on that set of minutes?
Looked like what I went to, but I don't know if I can vote or not yet. Went a little while getting in here. It had an invalid meeting ID for about three restarts, but thank you CJ.
I did too.
Very good, very good.
Yeah, everything.
Any corrections?
I moved that we approved the January 11th.
Minutes?
Minutes.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Abstained? And that one's good.
Hello?
Real quick Jerry, there was an issue on the November minutes that you guys had asked me to go back and review Village Solars. So those minutes have not been approved yet.
That's right, yep.
They are not included with your packet, but I did send out an email stating that I said invited because that was what was said in Larry Fabroni's email, like his little list that he sent what he wanted to discuss with us. So that's why I used the word invited.
Yeah, I wasn't there to that meeting. So Al, do you remember that?
Uh, there was a concern about, I think Lynn had a concern about the, um, the garage and the way it was worded. Was that right Lynn?
I know there was some issue in there. I'm afraid my gray matter isn't holding all that right now. But the idea is they would have room for people to use the garage. As I remember and Dean had issues with whether they could plum things ahead of time. Stub, stub it off, I.
So do we want to? Um, I don't know what the issue was, so I don't know where we want to go from here. If we want to try to approve those minutes or if you've got them, if they're accurately representing what happened at that meeting, then probably at the next meeting, we should get a copy of them. We can go through them and, and ascertain that fact for ourselves individually and vote on it. Okay?
Okay.
All right, next agenda is the privilege of the floor. Do we have anybody here for that? CJ?
Uh, no one in the waiting room for privilege of the floor.
Since we assume none of the board members want to take advantage of it, we'll skip past that one. And now for the town board liaison report. Sir Doug?
Okay, our meeting last Wednesday, the 20th, I believe. Yep. Um, Mike Sigler came on for privilege of the floor. Quick little bit about the solar. Basically what he'd said before. Just reiterating. Said he's been talking to a lot of people about the, I guess it's Article 23. So that's what happened there. Went through the consent agenda. Resolution declaring our 20, uh, 2008 GMC dump truck with a plow, two X mark mowers, a Kubota RTB. Uh, sorry about that. As excess property. And they want to purchase a new snowplow for one of the pickup trucks. Resolution reappointing Connie Wilcox to the Lansing Housing Authority. Resolution reappointing broadband committee members. A resolution declaring consent and approval of town board to the laying out and opening of Town Barn Road Extension. A resolution approving adopting local law number one of 2021 to update, amend, replace town code chapter 18, which concerns the ethics. A resolution approving highway department purchases of equipment in accord with capital replacement plans. And finally, a resolution approving an audit and budget modifications and the super areas report. Then we, instead of reading our organizational resolutions, we did much the same in the consent agenda as the consent agenda. So that was a little bit of respite for a very long night. So that happened and was good. We adopted those res, organizational resolutions. We had a town historian report from Louise Bomett. When I, should be in the, I think it's probably on the, on the webpage now. As well as a youth county, uh, Tom's County Youth Services Report. Um, and that went in line with all the other Lansing Community Library Report. Youth Services Report, Tom's County Legislative Report. Mike Sigler came on and did talk about that. They are still working. Parks and Rec. I will note there that, uh, on their opening day of camper reservations for 2021, the summer. He said he had $30,000 come in on that. I report, they're plowing snow, go figure. CJ's report was in the packet. Dave Herrick had no report and Connie Wilcox had no report. After that, board member reports, pretty generic. Nothing of note that I can remember, which is a lot right now, anyway. And then small work session and went into executive session. That was it.
Very good. Does anyone have any questions for Doug? There was something, oh. The other thing, did you mention the extension of the town hall road?
I did, in the consent agenda.
Good. So that leads us right into our next agenda item. Which is, uh, I think Mr. Hatfield with the wildlife resolutions. And I'm seeing on my tablet only a resolution. Is that all that we had or is there more I should be searching for here?
Uh, that's the main, that's the main item. Uh, there'll also be, I believe we included a part two and part three that was partially prefilled.
So I should look for a part two?
CJ, did the, um, town board at their January 20 meeting, approve the extensions?
Yes.
Okay.
I, I mentioned that, once again, I mentioned that as a consent agenda item that we had and I did, I did state it.
Yeah, I heard you say it was on the consent agenda, but, okay.
Right, so that was all, and then I said that we adopted all the consent agenda.
Okay, thanks Doug.
So I can get it addressed now?
Yeah, is that part, that parcel zone commercial?
Industrial, isn't it?
It's, I believe it's a split zoned parcel, actually. I think part of it is RA and part is IR. Uh, let me double check real quick.
Okay.
Oh, I see, I see it. I missed it here. Properties located in an IR district. All right, I missed that.
Yeah, no worries. It's the back, um, uh, here, let me just, uh, if you would like, I can just show you real quick. Uh, that this is the parcel in question here. And you can see that the, the front of the parcel, it's, so it's just split zoned.
Isn't that funny, huh?
Well, not necessarily here because you've got road frontage that's, you know, would be potentially residential right along Prueville Road and then the back is accessible from the, from the IR.
Well, and they could have different ownership too at one time, right? Uh, yeah, I believe the applicant, uh, could speak to that about the, the plans for RA and the IR portion.
I got a quick question. Wasn't there, Town Barn used to have an entrance there?
Further down.
Was it further down?
Further to the west.
Yeah, closer to Morabido.
Okay.
It's, it's to the, uh,
I know they closed it and I.
Right, it's to, to the west of the houses along Prueville Road.
It's where they cleared that lot. That tree lot.
CJ, could you put that map back up?
Yes, of course.
Thanks.
Just a moment. Zoom in a little if you'd like to. Uh, yes, this is the road, uh, or the, shall I say, second connection.
Right.
From Town Barn Road here, yes.
So the new connection's over there, okay.
Uh, yes, this, I believe it's right here. I think that's the road that runs along there.
That's, but there's no road, there's no, uh, connection to Prueville Road, is there?
Uh, no, no, that's. Took out that culvert. That's correct, as far as I understand. Yeah, the highway department closed that out.
Continuation of the road in front of the highway barn.
Exactly, yes. So it extends, uh, on the survey map. You can see it kind of ended a bit early. And so, um, the highway department said that it was already suitably approved to, um, their standards and so just took a map extension, basically.
I don't know, as we need to hear anything else. I certainly don't.
Do we need to go through any other, yeah, neg deck or do we just need to vote on the neg deck?
Uh, again, I think we combined them into a single action. Uh, I think we, for convenience, into a single resolution. Uh, the applicants here, if you'd like to hear from them, but.
Anyone have any questions for him? I think we went through this a few months ago.
Yeah, CJ had a question at one time about, there was some, um, I don't know, a big mound of dirt or something like that. And you were, you were questioning about what was the intention, what we were gonna do with that dirt pile. Uh, yes, uh, we asked, that's a great question Sandy. We asked the applicant to complete a ground disturbance form, uh, at the, basically a tally. Um, at the request of Lynn, of course, the stormwater management officer, and he was satisfied with that. And I believe we posted it with the submittals, so, um, I don't believe it was disturbing over an acre. No. Great question. I didn't remember that, thank you. Perfectly fine. And again, yeah, if you'd like to speak with the applicant about any of the materials they, there here.
Yeah, it does look like a significant amount of fill has potentially been either brought in since then, or I just noticed it since then on that parcel. When I drove by over the weekend. On the IR portion, it looks like there's quite a few piles of fill there.
All right, does anyone have any questions, further questions about this development? And if you don't, then can I hear a motion for a neg deck and final site plan approval? To, for the, uh, resolution to accept the resolution?
So moved.
Second.
And this calls for a roll call vote?
Just to clarify, uh, both Tom and Dale, or are we gonna have Tom and Lynn?
Um.
I came late. I don't, whatever you.
How many people are we missing here? Can we have all three of them? Or is it just Deb that's missing? I'm looking on a laptop now and I'm used to seeing everybody a lot bigger at home.
Where's Larry?
Larry's disappeared, so he.
He keeps coming and going.
So he may be having IT problems. So let's have all three of them. There's Larry coming back.
Then that's too many, then that's eight people. Right, two, three, four, five, six, seven.
Dale, you were, you were, um, I think the next one that was up for, uh, it was your turn, right?
I'm pretty sure it was my turn.
I think it's.
I thought last time Dale said that it was your turn. Maybe it was you that said it was Dale's turn.
I think I, it was me saying it was Dale's turn.
Okay, so.
Well, I think it is.
Dale?
It's Tom.
Dale, if you could sit this one out, would go with Tom as an alternate?
He, he does a good job.
I think we ought to make them fight for it. They're too far apart. There's no blood involved. They're too far apart. Okay Heather.
Tom?
Aye.
Sandy?
Yes.
Lynn?
Yes.
Um, Al?
Yes.
Larry?
Yes.
Dean?
Yes.
And Jerry?
Yes.
So moving right along to the, uh, that's all we had to do there, right CJ?
That's correct. Uh, and the applicant will be following up with the office regarding the emplacement of the sign, so they'll need a separate sign permit for that. But that's it. Thank you.
And if we move right along. Morabido? Or Lansing Propane Petroleum Storage and Distribution Facility? Do we want to bring them in to explain to us what we're looking at or did, or is there someone there? CJ?
Uh, yes, there's, uh, Wayne Mattson, uh, representative, uh, project engineer for Morabido as well as Brett Hughes. Uh, representing Morabido as well.
If they have a presentation, we could see it. Yes, Al?
Did anyone else have some confusion on the fire chief's recommendations?
Yes.
Do you think we should have the fire chief address this with us verbally?
I think that we at least need to see something either verbally that goes into the minutes or a written recommendation from him as to what we would like to see.
Well, we have something from Lynn, right?
Yeah, yeah, that's right. Lynn spoke up about this.
Yep, but I'd like to see something straight from the fire chief.
I mean, I think, I think determining whether that's needed or not is really above all of ours pay grade, I think. No, or?
Well, it seems to me we had talked to him about having a berm in there and it was going to contain any gas leaks because it was gonna be lower than, the gas was heavier than air. But that's going on memory from quite a while ago.
But it's kind of hard to, to override the chief's opinion. I mean, you know, I'm not an expert in that. The chief apparently is. CJ?
Uh, I was just going to add, uh, in site plan, uh, review criteria, and I'll just bring it up, uh, just for refreshing our memory, is that under site plan review, one of the criteria the planning board considers is, uh, public services. So consideration of any needed or desirable public services, including upon fire protection, uh, et cetera. So. Just want to mention that. And yes, of course, we can, uh, receive further, uh, input from the fire chief, um, as desired.
And I'm concerned about the, um, number and the distribution of the small tanks that they have floating around that site that seem to be fairly haphazard and, and not exactly what we want to see when people come driving into town from down Prueville Road.
Yeah, I took a drive, I took a drive by there on Town Barn Road. Looked at their existing tree plantings and spacing. And their current trees are nine foot tall. And they're spaced about 15 feet apart. Which is fine on the Town Barn roadside. And potentially, so that's the north side and potentially the west side. But the south side, we should, I, in my opinion, you should be asking them for a second row that would be interspersed. You know, offset from the first row in order to provide an adequate screen on the Prueville roadside where there's, you know, more, uh, traffic. And, um, you've got, um, potentially some, um, residences across the street as well.
Well, it did have all that screening until they clear cutted the lot in front of them. And now it's, you know, it's very visible.
Right, but they're certainly not gonna be putting in nine foot tall trees. For their vegetative screen and, um,
Right.
Even at, even at the nine foot level, they're just not filled out enough to really screen the area.
Yep, and I think that the clear cutting was done by another owner, property owner who wants to, maybe coming before the board with another plan here. But I do think that that ought to be screened and probably burned off to provide, you know, some difference there in case of, of, uh, leaks or, or, um, other catastrophic event.
Yeah, would help with the, the screening as well.
Yep.
We had asked for that before.
Are you talking about a berm all the way around the facility?
I thought we'd asked for that in the last one, but I haven't read the, uh, the last resolution from, um, that we did, was it three years ago or four?
We discussed the berm, but it was pointed out after the fire study that, uh, the precautions they have made against catastrophic failure of the tanks was supposedly adequate, but it doesn't provide a good, uh, buffer for, uh, for visual protection for the people across the street.
It certainly did seem like the perfect place for petroleum storage when all the screening was in front of it, right there next to the town barn and everything. But now it starts, it's sort of opened up and looking a little eyesore-ish.
Well, I see with the deluge guns that they say that they're not, planning to incur that expense, but they don't tell us what the expense is and so that would be interesting to know, for sure.
Well, we can take care of that problem with, um, with a note from the fire department, from the chief. So we'll either need him to come to the next meeting where this, um, issue is brought up or we'll need a, a letter from him.
I, I actually would prefer the chief showing up, you know, through the Zoom meeting if we had questions. I mean, I, I think that would be better if he would be receptive to that.
And let's see if he could give us a letter first so we have some basis to work with. We take advantage of some of his expertise and then if he could show up to answer questions, that would be great.
Yeah, it would definitely be nice to know. Yeah, it would definitely be nice to know if the deluge guns are a hundred thousand dollars or if they're five thousand dollars, for instance.
Seems the argument is between what safety is involved and abundance of caution and the law. And, uh, yeah, I, I think we need to, and I don't know, I would presume there's DEC restriction requirements of what you need or somebody was to.
Well, has anybody besides me ever seen a propane tank blow?
You're the expert.
Did you see the one on the highway down there outside of New York City about a month ago?
Yeah, I saw that. I saw that film. I've seen small propane tanks blown. It's quite a quite an enlightening experience.
And that was a truck that was transporting smaller propane tanks because, you know, everybody has to dine outdoors in New York City and they have to have, you know, heaters, sidewalk gradient heaters that they use portable propane tanks for. So they just had a humongous explosion when this truck crashed, caught on fire and then tank by tank, they all exploded. I would hate to be the neighbor next door when that happens.
Yeah, especially a 30,000 gallon tank, let alone three of them.
Right.
You need a big berm to put it up, up, up in the sky.
That was my point when they originally came before us. A berm would deflect the blast as, as well as providing visual protection.
Well, a wooden fence would not help. It would be like projectiles.
A wooden fence would be called shrapnel.
Yeah. But you might get a free fence in your house.
All kidding aside, I think that with the increase in the size of the place, and their obvious reluctance to believe that they're going to need deluge guns, I think a berm would be at least a partial answer.
Well, that's one of the questions we're going to want the fire department to ask, answer for us because we certainly are not experts, but it does make logical sense what you're saying, Larry. The, um, the other concern that I have has to do with the building. They're going to put a building up, but they don't seem to have any prints for it or give us any elevations or anything else. And that certainly would be part of our site plan review.
Well, there, there was another thing as well. The letter that Heather sent around with the photographs. I agree that there's, seems to be a good deal of light pollution, but one of the biggest lights seems to be the one on the peak of the town barn. According to the second photograph there that I looked at. And the third.
And that was asked to be read into record whenever you want me to do that.
Um, we could probably read it into the record right now, so we make sure we don't forget it. So go ahead, Heather.
CJ, you have a question?
Um, I was just gonna say that I was wondering if the planning board was intending to set a public hearing for this particular project because we could respond to the the author and let them know that we can read that aloud during the public hearing if they wish. But if you'd like to hear it now, that's perfectly fine, too.
Let's put it into the minutes of this meeting and it can be read at the public hearing for public consumption for anybody that doesn't see it.
All right. Says, Dear Town of Lansing Planning Board members, I live at 2065 East Shore Drive and my parents reside at 59 Prueville Road. My parents' house is directly across from the current Marabato Storage and Distribution Site and Proposed Site for Phase Two. They have a direct view of an extremely large 30,000 gallon tank and other aspects of this site. In the documents, Brad George from the Lansing Fire Department shares a photo of three large tanks. And that to, and that to what is presently on the Marabato site, you have an industrial eyesore, to say the least, with massive light pollution. The addition of three more 30,000 gallon tanks, building, parking lot, lights, trucks and workforce. How are you going to protect and shield the residents on Prueville Road from looking at this site all day and night? I am asking for a barrier of more than just small pine trees on the border of the Marabato Proposed Site. It will be years before these trees provide some type of visual barrier. A tall fence or cement while blocking the view from Prueville Road would not be out of the question for the planning board to require of Marabato. I see tall, eight to 10 foot tall and higher concrete site and sound barriers in many locations, which she includes a picture. This is what I look at when I pull in and out of my parents' driveway. This view is from their driveway and living room and dining room window. You cannot sit on the porch or in the front yard and avoid this view. How are you going to protect us from this eyesore? This is visually unpleasant and at night the lighting, which will increase, is annoying, distracting and constitutes light pollution. It is literally blinding when I pull out of their driveway at night. And she includes three more pictures. Also very concerning to me is that Marabato does not tell us exactly what type of fuel, propane or petroleum or something else will be stored and distributed from this site. How can one approve a storage and distribution facility if you don't know what type of gas, fuel or substance you are dealing with? I am extremely concerned for my parents' safety living across the road from something that reminds me of a giant bomb. Please consider requiring Marabato to block the view that is visible from Prueville Road, Route 34, from this entire site as it stands now. And if you approve additional buildings and tanks in the future onsite. Also, I beg you to make sure that my parents' safety is protected living so close to a large distribution and storage facility. Respectfully submitted, Cheryl Munson.
Couple of things. Uh, it seems to me that the previous approval required dark sky compliance with the lights that they provided. And even, even that including the light which appears to be on the peak of the Highway Department barn, the rest of that lighting seems to be a little bit on the bright side, wouldn't you say, Dean?
Um, I'm not seeing that photo.
Maybe CJ can put them up for us.
I do see that there's two existing light poles and it could be that those existing light poles need to be retro fit in, as one of the conditions of moving forward.
Can, can somebody bring those photos up?
Uh, I think it looks like Heather might have them handy. Would you mind sharing screen? If so?
We can't hear you, Heather.
She's saying something.
You're muted, Heather.
I have a paper copy. I have to pull them up in my email.
Oh, okay.
I have them right here.
Do you know how to share your screen? Ah, Sandy, cool.
I do. Do know how to share my screen. So this is, can you see it? This? This is the view and then this is then at night.
Oh, wow.
Yeah.
Town barn does well.
It does look pretty.
Over there.
Looks pretty bright, doesn't it?
If you scroll down, Sandy, to that first one.
It's a big bright light.
Yeah, right there. So you can see how those trees are like 15 feet apart. Yeah, don't provide an adequate visual screening.
No, not at all.
I, I don't see why we wouldn't have a berm, big one.
At least on that one side, both a berm and, and also probably two rows of six foot trees.
On top of it.
Yeah.
The bright light is coming from the, um, the town barn, right? In those pictures?
That's what it looked like to me, but there, looked like there are a couple of lights on the on site that were also pretty bright.
Probably behind that tree.
See one here, but I don't see the other.
Probably those tanks, right? Those tanks are reflecting an awful lot of light coming from somewheres, although, you know, maybe she used light sensitive or a light sensitive setting on the camera, but still, that's pretty darn bright.
But it still is down, um, dark sky compliant fixtures will put all their light down and reflect off those tanks.
Yeah.
And that's for sure. There isn't anything you can do about that, I don't think, unless you paint the tanks a different color.
Or put up a berm.
Put the lights at lower elevation. Shield the lights on one side.
Pick that berm up.
Yep, the berm certainly would be a big help.
The, the applicant's here. Why don't we see what he has to say about the lighting that's existing?
Very good. Let's bring them in.
Just a moment.
How do I stop screenshot? Oh, here, never mind. Got it. Can't find my button.
Hold just a moment. The applicants are coming.
I gotta get me one of those Captain Kirk chairs.
We're waiting for Brett. Mr. Madison, you're, you're you're muted, but do you have anything you could get started while we're waiting for Brett to connect?
What, what are your specific questions?
Well, do you have a, any additions to the proposal that we would like to see? Otherwise, we can start asking questions.
Um, I would just, soon you go ahead and ask questions. I've been paying attention to what you've been talking about, so you can go right ahead.
Okay, so I guess the last thing that we were talking about had to do with the lighting and the brightness. I'm pretty sure that that, the picture that we just looked at was seeing it as, as much brighter or sharper contrast than what probably the regular eyeball sees, but do you have any way that you could ameliorate the, or mitigate the, um, the effect on the lighting and the neighbors?
I would think that would be something that, um, maybe the people from Marabato directly addressed, but there's only two lights out there right now that were initially put in there. I think the photograph is probably a little misleading. It's, you know, it's hard to tell how much light is really coming from the Marabato site and what's being produced by the town barn. It's hard to screen that out. And what's being proposed in the new buildings and the petroleum storage areas. I think there's either four or five additional lights that would be, you know, town lighting compliant. The other thing that might be of consideration is that when the new structures are put in place, lighting might be a little bit reduced and the visibility might be reduced rather than putting a berm on that south side, you're going to have buildings that will create a natural visual screening of the site.
Do we have any idea what the buildings will look like or do you have any plans for them? Or an elevation of what they're going to look like from the outside at least?
I, I don't have any of that and other than what's been submitted by photograph. They, they don't have any specific plans. They, you know, they're just kind of standard run of the mill type of an office building and a, and a truck storage building just for overnight parking for trucks and, and then a small office building for a couple of onsite employees and then truck drivers to come get their orders in the day and, and maybe a one of their clients might come and pay or something at the building. So, but I don't have any plans yet.
I think that the board's going to want to see some sort of elevation and placement on the property. And something to do with the lighting around it and the entrance ways and, and traffic, extra traffic that might be incurred by having the extra storage tanks. I would assume that business is probably pretty good right through the, or for you guys right there, so traffic might be a little larger the more storage tanks you put in.
Have you reviewed the site plan, the most, the recent site plan that was submitted to CJ?
I have not been able to because I've just been on a trip down to Florida, but.
Because that has a lot of the information you're talking about.
So it doesn't have what the buildings are going to look like. It has the placement, but not what the buildings are going to look like. And, and I see that you have tank one, two and three, which it doesn't look like there's going to be any screening for the buildings from the road with those tanks, one, two and three. I mean, they're in line with the garage space.
The, the tanks are enclosed and they're self-contained. So they are, they're inside containment, steel containment structures.
Okay.
They would look basically like a steel box.
How high are those, how high are those tanks, the boxes? The height of the box?
I, I understand what you're saying. I don't have a cut sheet with me either. I did send a cut sheet to CJ that should have been in the packet that you guys have.
Oh, I didn't see. I mean, are we talking 20 feet? Are we talking 10 feet or ballpark?
Well, I would say it's roughly maybe 12 feet. I'd have to get the cut sheet myself.
Okay.
So, yeah, we'd certainly like to know what color the buildings and the petroleum tanks are as well.
It is, my crack is just petroleum, correct? The gas tanks, there's not any other chemicals, right? Propane, I'm sorry, propane.
Well, there's propane to the north and there's petroleum to the south, which I'm assuming those tanks can be changed as far as what you put in them, like kerosene or unleaded gasoline or diesel or, is that correct?
Yeah, we, we submitted a list of potential petroleum products that would go in there. You know, everything from gasoline to diesel to kerosene to fuel oil. That those are the products that would go in there. That the specific quantities haven't been determined because of the, each individual tank has different sized compartments and you can interchange what, what might be stored in one, one tank or another.
I think I have the cut sheet that you're looking for. If you'd like me to show that.
Yes, please.
As per Al's question, hold on just a moment. I think this is it. Is that right?
That's it.
Okay.
So it's going to be about 11 to 12 feet tall, looks like 10 foot six radius or diameter, excuse me.
Okay.
So are the tanks fully enclosed?
The tanks are the, the cut sheet shows the storage or the containment only partway up.
Yeah.
It's supposed to contain more than 110% of the volume of the tank. But it'll, it'll have more than that.
So indeed between the tanks and the office building and the, um, the garage, it is going to present a somewhat of a screening from Perrugill Road.
Yeah, part of that's of course going to depend on color. So if they're bright white, that's one thing, or silver. Um, and then at the same time, you know, there's going to be gaps there and, um, so there's kind of two issues here. One is visual screening. In addition to doubling up trees, you could potentially put in some kind of a fence there. Um, you know, maybe something 12 foot high or what have you to screen the tanks. Um, there's some gaps, but at the same time, the other issue is, um, again, safety.
Right, but I think we could, I think the gaps between the tank and the garage and between the garage and the office building, a privacy fence, solid fencing could eliminate, you know, any of the, um, views between the two or three structures. Would satisfy that concern from the neighbors as far as the visual aspect of it.
Well, that and, um, again, doubling up the row of trees just on the south side.
The site plan does indicate that there's going to be fencing in those locations. I think they're probably more thinking chain link type fence, but, um, you know, it might be something to consider, uh, if that's a, a concern. Um, to put something, uh, that's provides a better screen than chain link between those two, those gaps.
Right. I don't think that's a big, okay, good.
I think as far as the safety concerns, those petroleum tanks, if you will, caro diesel, they are in safety tanks already. As you say, they're in containment. So that's to be taken care of. Uh, I'm definitely a child when it comes to propane and what it does and it's having a bad day. So I think we did address some of that in discussion earlier.
Can, can you address the fire chief's concerns?
Um, I, I think, um, Marabato's stance at this point is there's, I don't think there's a law that indicates that they would have to put this deluge system and just looking at it, you know, even the code enforcement officers never encountered this before. So he was unaware of this type of a system. Uh, looking at it just seems like it'd be awfully expensive. Um, and you know, I, again, they, they don't have any of these at any of their other facilities. There are other bulk plants around the state, um, and really are unfamiliar with them themselves. So a, a little bit of unfamiliarity and, um, nothing specifically locally that, that compels them to have to do that. Um, they're just not, you know, inclined to, to put this system, which I gotta believe is pretty expensive. And because there also are two fire hydrants available right at the property, which is unusual for a lot of properties is that they have access to two, two fire hydrants right at the site.
Is there any way you could get us some ballpark numbers on the cost on that?
Um, I think your fire chief seemed to be more familiar with one down at Milliken Station and maybe he has some idea of what that would be of cost.
Yeah. So we'll see if we can hear from him. Um, the, the other concern that I had was the pad in the storage of the small tanks that are out there now that that seem to be fairly, um, in this deck, I can't think of the word, but they're sort of haphazardly thrown around there.
Correct. I, I think the, the plan is, is they, um, in this next phase, they'll, or the site will be organized and they will, they'll have a place on the property specifically set aside to have the, those tanks organized and, and staged in a way that they're not looking so haphazard. Um, there is going to be a lot of interchange with those tanks because they're, you know, they're, they're constantly moving in and out, in and out, but they, they will do it in a more orderly fashion when they're putting it
We'll need to see, we'll need to see that on the print. And it's probably good to have some screening on the site plan. I mean, it's probably good to have some screening around them. So regardless of how they happen to be dealt with, um, it wouldn't affect the neighbors or anybody else driving by.
I can show that.
Go right ahead. Oh, not tonight. You mean you can show it on the print?
I can, I can
I thought you were gonna, I thought you were gonna do that sharing thing again.
I, I can't share anything.
Yeah, I'm with you. So, um, yeah, those were the major concerns that we had, and I think that, um, um, it would be nice to have something to, to, uh, separate, to make sure that we're separated from the neighbors as far as visual, um, problems with them, things that, uh, at night evidently there, there are some lighting problems and can those tanks be a different color that's non-reflective like that? Or is white something that's specified by, by some code someplace?
Um, that's something that Marabato will have to answer. I, I'm not, I, I can't really answer that. I, I don't know. I don't know.
Brett, do you have an idea on that or? Are you with Marabato?
Yes. Good evening, everybody. Brett Hughes with Marabato. Yeah, tank colors. That's actually a great question. Typically, all the tanks we deploy are uh, white in nature, like the ones you're seeing currently onsite. I could certainly look into different color schematics. There may be some compliance issues as to why it has to be, um, a certain color as far as the manufacturer. Um, I actually don't have that answer, but I can find out pretty quickly.
Yeah, the only reason that color really matters is the white is so reflective of the light at night. That dark sky compliant doesn't really mean anything when you're shining down on hundreds of square feet of brilliant reflective white.
Yeah, totally understand. Yeah, we, um, I'll, I'll get the answer. I don't know the answer as far as color, you know, selections for these tanks. I just know that we deploy, um, the same color, white, um, as seen throughout the region. Um, you know, in regards to the lights, I, I jumped on kind of late, so my apologies, but, um, worth noting, you know, the structures we're proposing will provide a, you know, a natural barrier to that effect. Um, I had a conversation with Wayne Madison, um, recently related to the phase one portion of the project, which he also engineered. I think the current spacing for the tree plantings was uh, pretty aggressive in the sense that it was like 15 feet apart in distance where we were only required to be uh, 50, I think in the initial, uh, approval period. Um, but we're also proposing some additional fencing. Um, uh, not sure if that got, you know, discussed at all, but, uh, it's typically chain link with, um, green colored slats. Some, some privacy, um, is typically, you know, is substantial and sufficient enough for, for folks for that additional buffering and, and privacy. Um, but we, yeah, we're, we're willing to look at anything you guys, um, uh, need to make the expansion, you know, uh, possible and, you know, lighting, you know, we can always look at turning down the lighting. Um, you know, see what can be done there onsite if it is actually giving off a substantial amount of excess light. Um, for sure. I can understand that. We could certainly take a look at it.
We appreciate that. Any other questions? Does anyone on the board have other questions for these two gentlemen?
So I've been dropping in and out. I may have missed something, but, um, it seems to me that with a, a tank that's going to be 11 feet tall or 12 feet tall off the ground on a piece of higher ground than the house across the street, it's going to be kind of hard to hide them with a nine foot tree, particularly when acquire a berm. And then that maybe putting trees on top of the berm to provide adequate, uh, uh, protection from, uh, maybe a nu, maybe a nuisance, uh, to the houses across the street.
Um, I just want to address one of the things about the, the screening that was put out there. As Brett said, the original plan was approved with 50 foot separation on the trees. And they put in, put them in 15 feet apart. Trees are 15 feet apart, but they're, the way they've grown now, they're, they're really separated by about eight feet. Um, and it seems to me that if screening is an issue, putting another row of trees between them on the south border would be, uh, to close those gaps would be sufficient. Um, in 10 years, these are going to be, uh, you know, 20 feet tall and the, the screening will be well established. Um, so I'm, you know, I, I think it's putting a berm. I'm just not sure that, that, because you're going to start interfering with the stormwater that, uh, the runoff along that south side. Um, we have, we have a, a swale right there that was designed to treat the stormwater that goes into the stormwater pond. Um, and there's really not a ton of room to be, you know, putting a berm in there. It's not going to affect the location of the proposed buildings or the swale or the, the existing trees. So I'm, I'm just not sure if that's, I, I think of an additional row of trees may be a, a better solution.
Do you know when, uh, the phase one trees were planted?
Um, it was either 2015 or 2016. It was all done at the same time. So four or five years ago.
Okay. Do you know what size they were when they were planted?
Um, I would say they were five or six foot trees. I mean, I, I, I did the stormwater inspections out there at the time and, you know, they were all pretty good size, you know, for, for a first year tree. They, they definitely didn't skip on the, the tree they put in.
Right.
I understand that, but I don't think the neighbors want to wait 10 years for the trees to grow up to block their view. I mean, I wouldn't want to wait 10 years for the trees to grow. So I think, um, definitely, uh, a staggered row, another staggered row would help. But it's still going to be a long time before those trees, um, have, are grown enough to provide much coverage.
They're probably growing a foot to two feet a year. Um, depending on what kind they are, but it sounds to me like about a foot a year they've grown. They're about nine feet now. So the ones that are there in another year or so will be up over top of the tanks. And I don't know what size you'll put in. If you put in six foot trees, we'd have to wait for three or four years for them to build up, but at least it's headed in the right direction.
I think where the tanks are, we might, uh, see if they would, uh, in fact, uh, entertain a, a board fence or a solid fence with the slats, whatever. Uh, to, to cut that off, uh, if there's no interest.
Actually, Lynn, is it true that the, uh, when the buildings go in, they're going to pretty much screen the tank that's there now from Perrugill Road, won't it?
I think those tanks are right along to the, the building, if I'm looking at it correctly.
There's three tanks going in along the building and I would think they need to be well screened.
Correct.
At least down as far as the building so that you don't look at the tanks.
Correct. It's not the
But you wouldn't have to go the whole length of the, uh, property line, just screen the tanks off and the side of the building would be something that most people are going to expect to see through there anyway.
They may need to add some, um, fence screening on the, um, southeast portion as well. You know, if you look at to the southeast, there's several residential properties on the north side of Perrugill Road there that are potentially going to um, need some screening as well from their, you know, the backs of their properties.
Anyway, you guys can look at that and, um, when you come back, we can come back with a print that shows all of this stuff and answers the, uh, would answer the questions.
Well, we can certainly answer the questions about screening and, and tank colors and, um, you know, organizing the existing small tanks that are out there. But as far as the, um, system that the fire chief was proposing, is that something that could be, uh, looked into a, a little quicker than having to wait another month to, um, have all this reviewed again?
Well, we need to see this on paper before we can make any decisions. The other question that we have is whether we feel that there should be a public hearing um, on this project. And I don't know how the board feels about that yet because we haven't asked the question. But do we have any opinions on that from board members?
Well, we've only heard from one neighbor at this point.
Do the other neighbors know that this is happening? Yeah. Did they receive notification?
They won't receive notification until we have a public hearing.
Right. So not surprised we haven't heard from anybody else. They might have
Good idea. Because, um, it's set back, the property is set back from the main road. Uh, and what is it? 600 feet is where the cutoff is for notifying the public?
Yeah.
Yeah, maybe that's not far enough in this case.
Well, this is where we'd like to see a sign that lets the pit public who's driving up and down the road have an idea and make sure they can get their two cents in before they, uh, they run out of options. That way we won't be, uh, looking at any problems later on with people who are irritated with us because they were unable to find out what was going on in time to make their recommendations known.
Uh, we can also, if the board wishes, we can, um, extend the notification distance, uh, easily to 1,200 feet.
Especially in this case, because that's not going to include that many properties. I don't think.
I think the neighbors have to be notified on this. However, how we do it, it's whatever, however it works out, but they should be notified.
If we're going to call for a public meeting, I'd like some way to get facts in front of the public instead of allowing rumor, the rumor mills to build a lot of, um, animosity where maybe it's not necessary. I don't know if when we send the letters out, if we can send some information or point to people to information that is consult what's going on and make sure that it will, that tanks are, are fortified tanks and, and, um, safety is a paramount concern and the fire department's going to be involved in the whole thing and, and code enforcement will also be involved. Is that, uh, something that we normally do, CJ?
Uh, well, I did hear the request, uh, to have, um, the fire chief Brad George attend the next meeting, but of course I can reach out to him sooner than that. Um, and ask, uh, him to attend the next project review committee as desired. Uh, one thing we could do is again, double the distance for the public hearing notices that would be mailed to people's homes or addresses of, of property owners, I should say. And we could also, um, include a shortened link, uh, to make it easy for folks to just uh, type in a short link to take them to the full submittals, uh, on the Laserfish site.
And we'll make sure that the full submittals are very easy to find once I get to that link.
We will certainly try.
I like the idea of, um, the fire chief going to your working meeting. That way
Yes.
Um, they can, you know, go ahead.
Uh, I believe he just, uh, wasn't able to the, attend the last one, but I will, uh, reach out to him immediately after this meeting and, uh, just ask that he attends. but I will, uh, reach out to him immediately after this meeting and, uh, just ask if he attends. Uh, if not project review, then definitely, uh, the next planning board meeting. So hopefully we can.
Well, we'd like to see him at the planning board meeting, even if he goes to the project review meeting.
Okay, understood.
We would like the information from the project review meeting, though, included in our packets for the next planning board meeting.
Of course.
Well, I just thought it would be helpful if he had met with, um, CJ Maravado, Maravado before the, um, public hearing, so we have information to share.
Yes, we'll reach out to him right away and just, uh, ask about the cost. I think that was one of the questions and necessity and kind of the scope of, of what he sees would be, uh, necessary for this particular project.
Yeah, none of us are experts on fire suppression or these kinds of tanks, and he has a lot more information available to him and training, so we'd like his advice.
And, and Brett, you, you, you haven't seen this elsewhere in other tank farms, this suppression?
The deluge gun.
Yeah, the deluge system. So we looked at it. I asked around internally. We don't have any, um, examples of a system like that that we've had to install, so I, I couldn't even begin to guess, you know, the cost associated with it. I can, I can, you know, do some digging, we, you know, various vendors or suppliers, and just try and get a general idea. But as of right now, I have no clue, because we've never been required to install one.
And, and how many farms do you have?
Uh, oh geez, we operate in five, five states, and we've probably got, you know, twelve, twelve bulk plants total, best guess.
Okay. And what do they do for fire suppression in those twelve or, um, safety concerns? Are there, is there anything that other people have, have, that you've installed elsewhere that we should be looking at here?
Yeah, we've got all sorts of, um, solutions related to safety and, you know, compliance. Usually it's a combination of, you know, what's required. Um, we have some, you know, national level associations that, you know, regulate us as well that we have to adhere to, but it's anything from automatic shut-off valves, um, as part of the mechanicals, to, uh, fire extinguishers, you know, scattered throughout the site and placed appropriately, to, uh, bollards to prevent, you know, impacts, um, from vehicles in transit. There, there's a lot of solutions, you know, but a deluge system is not one we're, we're familiar with, um, that we've had to install, but, uh, I could do some digging, and, you know, if cost is, uh, um, you know, something of interest as far as, you know, conversation, I can certainly do my best to, to get you a cost estimate. I'm curious to know myself, to be honest with you.
We can, we can get Brad's advice on this and see what, uh, see what he's got to say and what his concerns are.
One, one thing I think we should note, at least what I'm reading here, those were anhygris ammonia tanks that they had the deluge system for. And I, I think Gary, Larry would agree with me, that's kind of really much more nasty in terms of caustic and being dealt with. Now that propane can burn you up, but I, you know, I, I wonder, I would presume he knows the effectiveness of water on a propane or a, a fuel spill. I, I don't get it myself, but, um, it'd be good to hear.
Yep, that's why we need some advice from somebody that has studied this. Uh, what do you think about a public hearing?
Yeah. Yeah.
Yeah.
So we're, we'll need to set that up then. CJ, you're not looking happy.
No, I'm, we're quite happy, happy to help. Um, the last thing I had was, um, and Wayne, you may have already sent this, uh, to us, but, uh, I think the multi-sector, uh, general permits, um, I think DEC has it already. Our, uh, town stormwater officer and engineer, we're just looking to do kind of a courtesy, uh, review with them. So I can't remember if you sent it to me already or.
Yeah, I, I did send that to you. Yeah.
Okay. Okay, excellent. Then I can forward that on to them.
And on a side note, the, uh, the septic system and, and water access to the office building that those plans have been submitted and are being reviewed by the, the Tompkins County Health Department. So I'm in dialogue with them, and those should be approved within two weeks, I would say.
Okay, does anyone else have questions? Go ahead, CJ.
Just, uh, do you recall when you sent that, uh, we had some correspondence about it, thinking like early January, uh, earlier this month?
What?
The, uh, multi-sector general permit. DEC probably already has it, but.
Uh, I don't think they would have it, because I think I just have to submit a notice of intent. It was probably two weeks ago.
Okay, it might just be buried in here.
I can forward it to you again. That's not a problem.
Oh, it's somewhere in here, hopefully. Yeah, that's great, too. Whatever's easy.
So would we have a public hearing, uh, next month? A month from now?
Uh, yes, that's correct. We would schedule that for, um, Monday, February twenty-second. And, uh, would the board like to review the parts two and three this evening? Or to give the applicant an idea if there's any existing information, uh, that you wanted to hear? I think I heard Jerry say something about trips or trucks or, I don't remember the full context, but.
Yep.
Just wanted to see if there's anything on that part two, uh, that we could let the applicants know you'd like to see. You know, obviously before the next meeting, that'd help expedite that.
Dean, do you have that?
I'm sorry, do I have what?
The part two.
Part two, yes.
Could you read that through? Because I don't have a packet.
Sure. All right, question number one. Will the proposed action create a material conflict with an adopted land use plan or zoning regulations?
No.
No.
Question number two, will the proposed action result in a change in use or intensity of use of land?
Yes.
Intensity of use, that's for sure.
Consistent with.
Certainly consistent with existing zoning.
And with existing use.
Small impact.
Hey Larry, it's good to see you back again.
It's good to be seen.
Are we, are we set on question two?
Yes.
We're saying small impact.
Yes.
Question number three, will the proposed action impair the character or quality of the existing community?
Small impact.
Mitigated.
Correct. I, I believe if we mitigate it, it will be small impact. Question number four, will the proposed action have an impact on the environmental characteristics that caused the establishment of a critical environmental area or, uh?
No.
Question five, will the proposed action result in an adverse change in the existing level of traffic or affect, affect existing infrastructure for mass transit, biking, or walkway?
Small impact, right?
Small impact.
Question six, will the proposed action cause an increase in the use of energy and it fails to incorporate reasonably available energy conservation or renewable energy opportunities?
No.
Question seven, will the proposed action impact existing, A, public-private water supplies?
No.
No.
Nope.
B, public-private water treatment utility?
No.
Question eight, will the proposed action impair the character or quality of important historic, archaeological, architectural, or aesthetic resources?
No.
No.
Question nine, will the proposed action result in an adverse change to natural resources? Example, wetlands, water bodies, groundwater, air quality, flora, and fauna?
No.
Question ten, will the proposed action result in an increase in the potential for erosion, flooding, or drainage problems?
No, it's being mitigated.
Being mitigated. Question eleven, will the proposed action create a hazard to environmental resources or human health?
That's a question.
That's pretty dependent on where you're sitting and looking at it.
Yeah, I think that we need to probably hear from the fire chief in person, maybe before we complete our answer on that.
You could, uh, also indicate, uh, moderate to large impact if you prefer, and then the, uh, follow-up can, uh, address that essentially as part of the seeker. But as the board prefers.
I think of, I think of moderate impact certainly would be reasonable here.
Okay. I'd agree with that. Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah.
Brandon, look what I got. You want to come see the cartoon?
We love kids. Especially when they're grandkids.
Sorry about that. I'm, I'm blushing. He's two and he just got his first haircut today, so he's very excited.
Okay, Dean. Was there more?
Uh, there's the part three.
Go ahead.
For every question in part two that was answered, moderate to large impact may occur, or if there is a need to explain why a particular element of the proposed action may or will not result in a significant adverse environmental impact, please complete part three. Part three should in sufficient detail identify the impact, including any measures or design elements that have been included by the project sponsor to avoid or reduce impacts. Part three should also explain how the lead agency determined that the impact may or will not be significant. Each potential impact should be addressed considering its setting, probability of occurring, duration, irreversibility, geographic scope and magnitude. Also consider the potential for short-term, long-term, and cumulative impacts.
So we really won't be able to, uh, answer that until we talk to the fire chief. Now, um, we didn't see anything on there with traffic, because traffic, extra truck traffic. Well, I guess that we need to find out from Maravado exactly what the, um, increase in truck traffic is going to be. And I think there has to be some, because all these tanks are not meant just to be stored stuff. That's stuff you're selling. And so I would assume you're going to have some trucks of different varieties, carrying different stuffs coming in, picking up stuff and taking it out to people.
Question, could we specify that the, uh, on the part three that our concern is related to, uh, health and life safety, and we need input from the, uh, fire chief?
We can, or we could wait until we get the input from the fire chief and then put it in, then fill out that question.
Well, okay.
That makes sense. Go ahead, CJ.
I was just going to say, as part of the determination of environmental significance, which, uh, could be anticipated at the next meeting, that will help the board, uh, make that determination, uh, getting that additional information.
Sound good, Larry?
Yeah. As long as it's in the minute someplace.
All right, anybody else have any questions for these two gentlemen? Thank you very much, gentlemen, and we will see you at the next meeting. We'll have a, uh, a, uh, public hearing, and we'll send out information and try to make sure that people have real information to deal with and not rumor and speculation.
We'll do what we can to help.
Thank you very much.
Thanks, everybody. Yeah.
Thanks.
Okay, what was next on the agenda had to do with everyone's favorite store out in, uh, North Lansing? Do we have them in the, uh, waiting room, CJ?
Yes, they've just arrived. A whole just, um, I'm not sure if they have a presentation, but, um, I could admit them.
Again, I don't have, I don't have a packet, and I'm not seeing anything from them, um, in whatever I can find. So I, I don't have things set up down here.
Plan and, um, in the same old storefront look.
Except it's got a corner, corner door.
I believe they did submit.
And we do see parking in front of the building.
Go ahead, CJ.
I was just going to say that they did, uh, submit some elevation drawings for the December meeting. I, as I recall, that had some, uh, some brick, uh, cladding and stone. If they were, had some, a little bit of differentiation, uh, so we can bring those up, too. If you'd like, I can, uh, admit the applicants now.
I know that Dean was looking around the internet and found a lot of their stores that looked, um, looked presentable in this position.
Larry, Larry had them too.
Yep, Larry had them too.
And I see there's one with at least a little peaky on it up, uh, up in, uh, Monizuma. Peachtree, Union Springs.
Forgot where I was driving, but I went, went by a Dollar General that really looked nice.
Um, we're talking about one in Interlock, and it looked nice, but I haven't seen it.
I saw one up on Route Three, North Watertown, that looked pretty decent.
Yep, so they have, they have, uh, plans for those, those. So I think that that would certainly help the neighbors have better, uh, acceptance of the project. If it, uh, looked a little more residential and a little less commercial, although it's going to look commercial no matter what, uh, it'll blend in better.
I do like the fact that they moved the parking.
To the side near the entrance.
Yeah.
But I do think we need something with a roof line.
Okay, well, let's bring them in, and we can ask them those questions. See if they have a presentation first. Hello, Steve, and welcome to the meeting.
Hello. Good evening, everyone.
Evening.
Have you been listening to our discussion, so you have an idea of what, uh, what kind of questions you're going to see?
I think so. Uh, there's a little bit of delay sometimes, so I might have missed a little bit here and there, but, uh, I'll be happy to hear what you have to say. Uh, I don't know if you wanted to see the site plan. I know, uh, Mr. Callward, you didn't see the site plan, so I can share that with you with, uh, my screen if you'd like.
Yeah, I've got a pretty little screen here on a laptop that I'm looking at, because I just moved to Florida for a month or so and haven't got things set up very well.
I see. Well, I'm glad you're enjoying some warm weather, though.
Yeah, it's eighty degrees down here.
I'm jealous.
Steve, I think we, 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 we need to say thank you for relocating it, though, to start with. We asked, uh, remove the parking to the side, and you guys were, were receptive to our requests. So, uh, again, thank you for, um, relocating the store on the site.
And the corner, corner door. Seemed to be a big thing that everybody was interested in, and to see you do that is a big step in the right direction.
Yeah, uh, it seemed to be a running theme, uh, with your comments, and we want to listen and, uh, be good neighbors. And we understand you, you guys are looking out for your residents, so, uh, uh, it was happy, we were happy to, you know, make that change. Uh, it was, you know, it was a little more pricey for our client, so they were, you know, they had to weigh the costs on this, so. But we, I think we have a layout that works. you know, they had to weigh the costs on this, so uh, but we, I think we have a layout that works uh, and, you know, just wanted to make sure we got your buy-in before we, you know, go full bore with, we have to change some, make some adjustments to the stormwater, uh, and, you know, the SWIP and, you know, redo some things with the DOT as well. Uh, so, we just wanna make sure, you know, you guys are happy with what we got now for a layout uh, that, you know, it's something you're comfortable with.
Yeah, can you share the screen, just so everybody can see it with the um, with the present layout?
Sure, just give me one moment here.
Thank you.
Welcome. All right, you see that?
Yeah, you need to blow that up a little bit.
Okay. How about now? Good?
That's the old.
That's the old one. Just, just wanted to go back in time.
Yep.
This is what it was, uh, had the parking in the front, you know, thirty-seven spaces like the town code requires, uh, some along the side, uh, and then we switched it per your request to hold on a second. Get the parking to the side of the building, the building right up to the setback line, uh, kinda tucked into that corner, uh, and then it just goes along the side of the building, uh, and then we have a little truck turnaround here, uh, so the big truck can swing in the back and then back up, and I illustrated that over here. Just so you have an idea, they can do their backup maneuver on-site and not have to, you know, mess with the DOT route, uh, so they can get in and out, no problem. But uh, again, zoning compliant plan. We're taking a look at the stormwater, we think we're gonna make that work. We have screening along the north side, uh, that's where the, there is a residence to the north, so we put in a fence that's a hundred thirty feet long, uh, and some trees on the north side of it, so they can see that, uh, instead of the building. Trying to think of other things that changed. The location of the drive moved over about thirty, forty feet, I wanna say. Uh, so we're gonna show that to DOT. Uh, as a matter of fact, we just got DOT comments on uh, what they call stage two on Friday, but that was for the old layout. Uh, and it was pretty minor, their comments, so I have a pretty high level of confidence they'll be okay with this too. Uh, as a matter of fact, our site distance for this site should get better. Uh, I'm pointing to the screen, which you can't see where I'm pointing, uh, but uh, we're kinda on that curve, so they can see more to the north without having a, an issue there. It was, the site distance was good before, uh, and met all the requirements, but now it's just gonna get better. I think that is all. Uh, the other thing you guys were talking about was the building itself. Uh, we did switch to the corner building. It's their typical building for the corner entry. Except this is kind of a prototypical layout, so there won't be that parking in the front that you see. I don't know if you can see my cursor. That's just uh, illustrative of this. We're just trying to get the point across of what the corner entry building looks like uh, for, for this uh, prototype.
So I'm assuming that the corner entry is the only thing you're trying to illustrate there, because our previous meeting, uh, we, we discussed a totally different look in terms of the exterior of the building.
Okay, um, so what are you looking for exactly in that? I, I meant, I heard like a couple of different towns that you guys like, uh, but it seems like, I think it was, I forgot who the gentleman was, uh, who mentioned there was a certain corner entry style that was preferable. Uh, I can't make the decision on this, but I can certainly take it back to our client to, to look at uh, and, you know, come up with something.
Well, certainly the minimal starting place would be the one that was just put in on Route thirteen in Dryden. I'm not saying that's what we would prefer, but that's head and shoulders above this.
Okay.
Do you have a picture of that Dean?
Um, I think I emailed that out at the last meeting, so maybe you can, somebody can find an email and then share their screen, but um, that one had several embellishments um, that were very nice. Looked way better than this. This looks, yeah, pretty bad. My humble opinion. We're definitely looking for something attractive. Understood.
You're looking for something a little more residential? Is that true, Dean?
Yeah, it's something that, uh, yeah, doesn't look quite so industrial. Um, something that potentially has, I think that one in Dryden has some faux windows on the sides.
I don't think I've been in that one.
You said that was on Route thirteen?
Yes.
Okay.
Larry?
Yeah.
Are you still here? Do you have any questions for?
I'm still here. Um, I, I like the corner entry, the side parking, but uh, like you were saying a little earlier, the uh, the residential appearance, all the other buildings, including the old Alcona Hotel and the uh, fire station across the street, all have a gable end on the roofs. And I know some of the Dollar Generals I've seen have a, a faux gable end, uh, which I think would give this a better profile, a better presentation from the road.
Steve, if you can un-share for a moment, I could share a, a picture from um, there.
Sure, the screen is yours.
Everybody see that?
Not, yeah, there we go.
Where's that?
That's right on Route thirteen.
Oh, I like that.
In Dryden, near Nisec. So it's got two faux windows, it's got the roofs, it's got certainly different materials, um, change in the roof line.
Yeah, I like that.
I would go for that even if it didn't have the peak roof. That looks like it'd blend in pretty well.
Exactly.
Yeah, that wouldn't be too bad.
Big, big difference.
Yeah.
Now, let's see if I can un-share, stop share. There we go.
Okay, uh, I appreciate the comments. Uh, I feel like, you know, we're, we're getting a good feedback here, and it's something I can take to the client and they can, you know, make a decision and see, you know, how it can work with their budgets. And um, we can go from there.
Can you bring your uh, site plan back up, Steve?
Sure.
How, how high is the fence you're talking about to the north?
That is a six-foot stockade fence.
So the neighbors have requested a twelve-foot fence.
Yeah, the previously, there was fence on um, both the, the east and west um, property lines. And here, I think that we're gonna want that fence that you show on the east property line to certainly extend all the way past where the dumpsters and the propane tank are, just to totally screen that side. Um, tree-wise, um, probably something along the lines of white spruce, but we're gonna wanna see a, a planting schedule, probably a minimum of about six foot high and um, ten to fifteen feet on center.
Just to be clear, we're talking the north side, not the east side, right?
Right.
Yep.
Is that, oh yes, I'm sorry, yes, north side.
Just like, yeah, east of the fence there. Okay.
Well, we're, we're not, we're not saying that you have to put a twelve-foot fence up there.
Got it. Yeah, that is pretty tall.
That, that would be, I think that would be worse, having a twelve-foot, and you have the trees that are gonna soften that fence and the side up. I think the neighbors would be fine with the trees, the building the way it is now, and that fence. I think that's, that's personally, I think that's more inadequate for uh, screening or buffer.
Can you, the main entrance uh, kind of away.
Yeah, I think that helps. Uh, it kinda, the building almost forms a screen, so they don't get to see the parking and the lighting, that gets all viewed blocked.
I think, I think once a neighbor sees this proposal, um, they would, they would feel that that's adequate as far as protection from the um, the traffic and the parking and et cetera.
Yeah, especially if you extend that fence back past those utilities there, right?
Yeah, you see my cursor? Just like come up to like there, so, yeah, okay.
So, along the front, when we talked about landscaping, um, the request was to have something other than twelve spirea bushes around the sign. So, I mean, the thi, the types of things that I see, for instance, would be you know, past the roadside ditch. Uh, along, you know, both sides, you know, potentially exactly some, something in there and on the other side of the driveway, things like um, you know, a dogwood bush that's, that's gonna be low and is gonna have some uh, you know, yellow or green or red color in the wintertime and, you know, potentially something like a mugol pine or something, just to have something other than just grass on that uh, boundary, but obviously not something that's gonna really block the view of the, you know, the building.
Kind of some low lying shrubs.
Yeah, exactly.
Yeah, just, uh, just a quick note there, mugol pine doesn't do too well in that soil up here in North Lansing.
All right, well.
Experience.
Okay.
So that, those are my thoughts on landscaping.
Uh, you guys good with the trees that we got over here, and you said uh, white spruces, you're kinda lean towards?
Those, those seem to be kinda one of the go-tos around here.
Okay. See what we can do there.
Just a question without looking at everything, is this gonna have uh, underground electricity, or it's coming in from overhead someplace?
Uh, a lot of times they do overhead. Uh, it's mostly gonna be dictated by the utility company. Uh, right now, I think there is overhead uh, in that southeast corner.
Okay.
Uh, and on this plan, I haven't dived deep enough. Uh, I think we were doing a portion of overhead in the previous version. Uh, yeah, we were overhead into our site and then underground from a certain point, but again, we haven't like fully gone a hundred percent gusto with uh, I think it's Nisec out here uh, for what their recommendations are.
Steve, I don't see anything on here for lighting. Can you illuminate for us what the lighting plan is?
Uh, so I haven't done it for the new layout yet. Uh, I'm gonna submit this. We have a lighting vendor that does these, uh, but let me see if I had it on here. Uh, typically, yeah, we had two over here, and I think there's one that might have been underneath this green hatch that might have been hidden. Uh, there typically, they'd be twenty-foot in height LEDs, uh, downward facing, full cutoff, uh, and dark sky compliant. Uh, their goal is to have zero light spillage onto the neighbors, so with the foot candles on the lighting plan that you'll, will submit, uh, it'll show uh, that photometric plan with zero uh, along the edges is the goal uh, for that, and I think it's gonna be better uh, with this layout over here.
Yeah, because the building a block a lot of that, yeah.
Exactly, yeah.
What, what, uh, do you have an idea on height for the building?
I wanna say it's about eighteen, nineteen feet in height, somewhere around there.
Can I ask a question about the truck turnaround?
Yeah.
Um, there's no neighbors like light from the trucks spilling off towards the wooded area. I don't think there's any neighbors in there, right?
There's a house to the west, but there seems to be a lot of bushes.
Yeah, uh, let me just see something here. Hold on, let me see if I can switch my uh, screen.
And there's a trucking company to the southwest, right?
Right.
I just didn't want if the truck was you know, trying to back, you know, back up. I mean, and somebody's house is right there, they're gonna get a lot of light.
The, the house is quite a drop in elevation also between the, the turnaround there and the uh, the house is more or less in line with it.
Okay.
That, that would have been the old Smith place down on DeCamp Road.
Oh, okay.
Do your trucks come in early in the morning or anything that's going to be backup alarms and?
Uh, they try to do it off-hours, uh, and it's like a once-a-week thing is the goal. Um, and it's usually before eight. Um, but it depends on traffic and weather, uh, whether they uh, hit that target, uh, but that's typically, it's not that frequently, uh, once a week is what their goal is. Uh, I don't know if you could see, I shared a, a new screen. It's just aerial.
Nicely done.
Uh.
What is, what is that building to the, yeah, right there. What is that?
There are two trailers, two trailers, yeah, that uh, they're gonna be taken out as part of it.
Oh, nobody's living, they're not.
No, no, I think they're, they're just not used.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
Oh, I see, yep. Well, I was like, we're actually there.
Steve, have you talked to the county about their uh, energy recommendations for new construction?
Yes, we have. Uh, we've scheduled a meeting with them. Uh, our architects uh, have been coordinating with the energy consultants, and now they have uh, this third-party energy consultants that take a look and say, all right, what can you guys do? Uh, we're gonna make some recommendations, and this is my understanding, they make the recommendations and our architects are gonna be like, oh, can we achieve that, or is this feasible here? Uh, and they document uh, whether or not they can make those changes or implement them. Uh, and we're just still waiting for that energy consultant to finish their uh, review.
Okay, um, so the reason I ask is because the county is really pushing uh, heating and cooling with heat pumps, and a number of new projects here in Lansing have gone that route. Uh, so it obviously seems to work. Uh, the Keighley Lake National Bank is gonna use heat pumps. Uh, there are a bunch of new apartment buildings that are using heat pumps. Uh, there's a new business complex that went in on Trip Hammer Road that is using heat pumps. And who else? Oh, uh, Salt Point Brewery that's going in, they plan on using heat pumps. So I hope that you folks are taking that as a serious option.
I know they're, they're looking at, it's not my area of expertise, uh, the energy side of things, but uh, they have, I know they have their, their kinda, their standards. Will they deviate from them? I think if, if it makes sense cost-wise, they would. Uh, but I don't know for sure, like what goes into, into that, and uh, I'm sure they'll, they're gonna make a decision that makes the most financial sense for them in that regard. But I'm, I'm still, don't, don't know the answer yet, whether they're going one way or the other.
Well, in the long run, uh, heat pumps are cheaper than, than propane heat.
Okay. Okay.
Very good. Anyone else have any more questions for Steve?
Nope.
I assume we'd like to, pardon?
I do have a public comment that somebody asked me to read into record.
Okay, let's do that now.
Okay, we are writing to request a 12-foot high privacy fence on the border of our property and the proposed dollar store property. Running from Route 34 to the back hedgerow. We believe this is to be a reasonable request as our property and the home are so close to this retail, retail store. Sincerely, Robert in June Hall.
So I think that we have looked at that and um um, a six-foot high fence with proper screening will break up and soften the looks of the building. And especially if we get a building that's not um split-faced block. Or at least doesn't look like it's split-faced block in case they've come up with a split-faced block that looks like Klattberg siding or something like that. Then I think that uh those uh objections will go away, but I think that we're going to need a public hearing on this. Would everyone agree?
Yeah, I do. Yeah, yeah.
Would you like to see one at the February 22nd meeting? Do you think we're at the point where we could do one for that and one for Marabato?
Yeah, I think that uh the proposal here is getting much closer to, to what the community's gonna accept. So I think it'd be reasonable to have them on February.
Is everyone in agreement?
It would certainly help if uh, if they're able to come up with a a good uh graphic elevation of the uh, at least the east and the south sides of the building, so people can see what they've done to uh, to change the look of it.
Yeah, I would think the neighbor on the north side, Steve, is gonna wanna know what the back of the building's gonna look like as well. And for reference, that photo I showed, the one in Dryden, it's actually a Freeville address. It's right next door to upscale remodeling. Which is 1410 Dryden Road, Freeville.
So any information you can get, Steve, into um CJ as soon as possible. And she can get it, she or Heather can get it up on the website. And we can direct people to that information before they come to the public meeting, the public hearing. And we would um, again, like them to have as much real information as possible so that we don't have rumors and speculation running the meeting.
Sure, I'll uh, I'll send this request over.
We'll go ahead and do the uh 239 uh referral as well for both this project and Marabato, especially because they're working with the energy advisors. Uh, they should be hip to that uh already, so we can coordinate those two uh reviews.
Being this far out in the rural areas, do we think that we should look at a 1,200-foot radius on this one too or or uh is 600-foot gonna be sufficient?
No, the, the residents aren't, aren't within that 600-foot range for the most part. I think we need to go wider.
So if we could extend this one out to the 1,200-foot range, we'll have done what we can. I would also, again, like to see a sign up there stating that that's what we're gonna do and when the public hearing is. If the developer would like to put that up. That would be very nice and probably would help out a lot to uh make the community feel better about the project.
Like a, a posted sign for noticing the meeting?
Just that, that uh, what your, what your plan? The planned building that it's, that a Dollar General is looking to go in here in the public hearing on it at the planning board is gonna be February 22nd. Would give people an opportunity to, and if you, you could, you might even throw the email or the uh web address that CJ could give you as to where all of the documents will be on that sign and people driving by them who might get irritated at the public hearing would have a chance to look and see what the facts are.
I, I've never done like a sign like that myself. Is that something that CJ, you can help me out with, like uh as far far as like what you typically would see for that?
Steve, we've never done it either. I'm just trying to promote it because I think it'll be a big help with the neighbors.
Personally, I think it'd be more useful than the 1,200-foot notification.
Yeah.
Uh, it could just be a simple temporary sign. We could, Steve, if you email me, we can just put a couple details on a uh, probably what the planning board might like to see, just the date of the public hearing, right, and maybe a short link uh that we could create.
Okay.
Uh, that you could put on the sign.
Okay.
It doesn't need to be uh too complicated. Something temporary is fine.
We just wanna give everybody the opportunity to see the facts instead of um rumors and speculation. Getting to be my favorite words. All right, uh anybody have any more questions for Steve? Any more?
No.
Well, thank you very much.
I just have one last question. Does um, I think we asked Bob last time about some tear sheets, like material tear sheets. Um, and if you could um submit those as well, uh that way we'll have a, we were gonna maybe pass around, you know? Some material samples. Uh, that's, yeah, yeah, just.
Close-ups type of thing or?
Yeah, of any of the, yes, exactly. Just the cut sheets of the material and colors, just so we have kind of like a materiality kind of sample, sampler, to kind of understand what we're looking at there.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Sure.
Thank you very much, Steve. We appreciate you being here and hopefully you're in a warmer spot than most of those people are still in Lansing.
It's getting two to four inches tomorrow, I hear.
I love it.
Hey, have a great night, everyone. Thank you for your time.
Alright, thank you.
Thank you. All right, you have a planning report, CJ?
Oh, just uh wanted to know if there's any questions on the report that I sent. Trying not to uh, oh, the go ahead.
I'm sure I would have some if I'd read it, but I didn't.
Uh, no words.
Where are we on the solar that we, we're talking about?
That was going to be my follow-up question. Um, and it, there was something I did wanna say. Of course, Lynn, uh, if you hadn't uh yet heard, had a surgery on his hand. Uh, and so um uh so bear with us as we uh try to stay on top of all that. Big thanks to Heather and Lynn for uh keeping the show on the road despite um that injury. Um, and the solar, that's what I was going to follow up and ask you. Uh, were you ready to um, and the reason I wanted to ask you also is that I would need to convene all these committees. Um, and I have tried to reach out to Connie Wilcox, Chair of the Agricultural and Farm Land uh Protection Committee, just to see when we could get a meeting uh with them again. So I just wanted to be sure you wanted to move forward with the a draft that was sent on the 11th, or would you wanna wait till after the session we're supposed to have? Um, with the attorney for the town guy Crow on, I think it was March 8th we slated it for. Okay.
Yeah, my, my opinion is that the the most important thing that we can do in the meantime to move forward is to make sure that people are aware of the draft proposal, what the changes are in it. And looking at those changes from the perspective the guy gave us, which is um, to provide um some whereas statements to back up those changes. So those whereas statements would be things like, whereas um the town of Lansing has um, uh native population of bobcats that um um wildlife corridors are essential to um uh that species in our town and, you know, thus we um you know, tie that into the um, the setback requirements, for instance. Um, and really going down the line for each of the things that we propose in the draft. Uh, I think we need to help the town board out by providing those, whereas those kinds of statements and backup. And that's what uh Guy was, was suggesting that we do in order to um try to give this things a snowball's chance.
So justification for every point we have, right, yeah.
Yeah. And so I think we want as many people on board with knowing what those changes are and discussing, you know, whether they are in agreement with them and setting them on the course of, you know, chiming in with um reasoning so that that can all kind of come together and be um advanced to the attorney and the board, the town board. Um, so that they have that in hand and don't have to make it up out of whole clock later on.
Okay, and would you like to do that at the, get a draft going at the next working meeting on the February 8th? Uh, to try to maybe start that resolution for the town board? Okay.
And it, you know, it would behoove us certainly to send that out to all the committees at this point. For their input.
Okay, so we're gonna, I'm asking Agricultural and Farm Land Protection Committee to convene. Uh Conservation Advisory Council can probably take a look at it. Um, they defer to Tom on this, but at their next uh meeting, which will be next Thursday, the 4th. Uh, and then we have fire and highway review and that's pretty much it. Of course, uh I'll send it to um Guy as well uh to take a look at. So that's pretty much the committees that I see reviewing it unless I've missed somebody. Um, the only people I would think might wanna also take a look at is the Lansing Advisory Committee on the Power Plant Future. Uh, I don't believe that they're set to meet again until March, but I do have a call with the chair of that committee on Wednesday, and I can certainly ask her um if they would be willing to convene, you know, sooner.
So the other item that needs fleshing out would be the different um supportive schedules. Whether that's on the pollinators or whether it's on the screening or the fencing. Um, and certainly the setbacks that we want everybody to review those and um, you know, make their recommendations for filling those out, fleshing them out, so that they're right now, they're very sketchy and not comprehensive at all.
Okay, and that was the table you provided, right?
Right.
Dean, okay. Okay, so you'd like to have them weigh in on um all the amendments essentially in this first round?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
Okay, all right. Well, we'll do our best.
You send that.
Yes, of course.
I mean, it looks so serious. There you are.
You look really good with the mini split in the background there.
Oh, yeah.
CJ, have you heard anything about the short-term registry?
Oh, um, yes, I actually received some correspondence today. Uh, hold on. Uh, yes, the top two scoring, uh just to give you all some background, and if you don't recall, the county put out a request for proposals for a short-term rental monitoring and analytics program, so they can kind of do that at the county level. And um, uh Nick Hemold is the planner at the county, uh coordinating that effort along with the town of Ithaca, uh Dryden, uh the city of Ithaca and um I can't remember who else, but um, uh and also county assessment. Um, and so the two top-scoring firms were Granicus and LTAS Technologies. Um, and so the interviews are gonna be coming up um next week, so um, just let me know if you have any questions or comments on that, but I'll be sure to give you some uh uh info on that when I see you again on the 8th.
Okay, thank you.
Absolutely.
The Voice had an article about the town of Dryden. Feeling they had 300 units of uh the Airbnb, whether it was VRBO or one of the others. And they were considering trying to control it through a noise ordinance. That's, that's really backdooring the darn thing, isn't it?
What about the rest of us?
Well, you make too much noise up there on that farm anyway. Those tractors are terrible.
Look, there's no property left. It's just time to get it to the state.
Okay. Uh, and there was a question I just wanted to address about the Keugah Lake and National Bank. Um, and Tom did pose that question as well. Uh, the planning board did request as part of the site plan uh review that they submit that energy report. Uh, similar to the one that the North Tripphammer Commercial Project had submitted as well. So I believe that they're in that process now. Uh, George, uh, and the uh county uh energy, you know, Lansing Business Energy Advisors. So, we'll keep you posted.
Everybody saw Lynn's update on enforcing the trees there at the bank.
Yeah. Yeah, I spoke to him the other day, too.
There'll be a planting schedule coming as well, of course, as was the condition for approval. And I think that's it for me, unless there's other specific questions.
All right. Is there anything else on the agenda? My computer's deciding to update.
I have two more public comments.
Well, let's get them into the um, into the record.
Right, these are long ones.
Is this from Sherry Monson?
Yep, and Stacy Wilder.
Oh, yeah, they are long.
You read the one from Sherry Monson earlier.
There's another one. This one's about the Dandy Mart.
If they take more than three minutes, I would suggest that after three minutes, we just put, put them in the written records so that we can uh read them.
Shall we wait on the Dandy Mart one until we um have that in front of us?
Yeah.
So that it'll be in the record when we're actually discussing that project? I think we probably all read it. We want it in the public record, but it ought to be in there along with the rest of the record on that project instead of stuck into this one.
And, and I thi- I think we probably would agree that, that we would like to see a stockade fence between the Dandy Mart property and the uh daycare center for screening. I mean, it didn't come up, but, I mean, we can say that's something we probably would want, correct?
Yes.
Although, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, not just for visi- visible screening, but as a physical barrier.
Safety for children.
Right.
Yeah, good idea.
Well, and if, and if it's something that like the trucks are gonna be right next to, I wouldn't even want something more robust. I mean, we wouldn't want a truck going to the daycare. I mean, their yard, I mean, not the building itself, but their backyard, I mean. I, I'd have to look at the plans, but if it's, if trucks are gonna be really near there, I'd want some of those with the cement.
And, and, and that might even be an eight-foot-high fence as opposed to a six-foot-high fence.
Yeah.
Yep, we can get into this when we have that in front of the board.
The, the trucks do have an idling uh law where they can't idle, so I think uh we take care of some of the noise issue.
Heather, did you have another uh, another letter besides that one for Dandy Bart?
Uh, they're both for Dandy Mart.
Oh, yeah, let's bring them up um at the next meeting that those fellows decide to show up to, if you can. Yep. I'm pretty sure that, I'm pretty sure that my organization system would not be able to do that, but I'm confident yours can.
Uh, we've not yet received a completed applicant. Uh, we've not yet received, uh, completed application from them yet, but certainly the board will, uh, receive that as soon as we do.
Yeah, we'll take a look at what they have after they talk to us because they seemed receptive to a lot of our ideas. Is there anything else that's on the, uh, we have on the agenda?
Move to adjourn?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Everyone have a nice next two weeks.
You're gonna miss shoveling snow, Guy.
Night, everyone.
Yeah, well, I don't usually shovel snow anymore, I usually have people do that for me nowadays.
He's got people now, it must be, I'd be in the chair and getting all the money.
I left my pl- my truck there with a plow on it and gave the keys to somebody else so they can plow.
Gotta love you.
Okay, guys.
Thank you very much.